This conference will now be recorded.
Number forty-five in block twenty-two, T and P survey with Zebra Investments. Any questions from the council? Do I have a motion?
I make the motion, we accept the recommendations. And.
With the amendments?
With the amendments.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who said that?
Carrie Braxton.
Carrie, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Okay. Is this April? Was she on there or?
We didn't do that.
Oh. Okay. Item five. Do we have any callers who wish to comment or emails that need to be read?
We don't have any email, do we? That came in? No, sir, we did not have any emails that came in or nor anybody who wants to call into the meeting to comment.
None? Okay. And. She here? She not here? Census?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Let me see if she's on.
You can just open up the.
Hi.
The item, open up the item and then we'll see if she's on there.
She whips it. Okay, item number six, we will hear from Ms. Amber Pedego with the United States Census on an update on the census.
Amber, are you?
Hello?
There you are, good. Thanks for being here with us this morning.
Yes, sir, thank you guys very much for having me. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. I know things are a little, a little wonky right now. But I just wanted to call and give you all an update on the census response for Nolan County and for Sweetwater. Just let you know where things are at with the timeline and, and kind of the, the remainder of the plan for the remainder of the census for 2020. I'll start out with the, just a few numbers for you all, the Nolan County text, the Nolan County response rate right now is at fifty-one point nine percent, which is actually not terrible compared to the state of Texas, which is at fifty-six point nine percent. There are a lot of counties that are way behind that, so it's actually doing pretty well in keeping up with the response rate, which is good. We would like to see that go up, however. In your, in Sweetwater proper, you actually have the highest self-response, which is at sixty-one point nine percent. Nolan County is broken down into five separate tracks, and all of them are actually responding pretty well. It looks like the north side of the county seems to be responding more than the south side of the county, but moving forward, some of the places that I'm going to be meeting with either over the phone or ideally in person at some point are going to be your apartment complexes, your church leaders if they're willing, and then continuing to work with your schools to incorporate response. This will be the first time that we've had two school years that we'll be able to go into. Originally, the census was going to be ending on July thirty-first, but due to COVID nineteen, we will actually be extending that until October thirty-first. Congress has given the go-ahead and it's been approved to extend it for a few months, given the lockdown and, and the trials that we've had to go through because of COVID nineteen. So, that being said, there are a number of operations that were impacted by this, one of them being update leave, which is what they call when they service people that have P O boxes. So just to give you a little information on that real quick, the post office boxes, by law, we are not allowed to deliver a survey to a P O box. It has to be a physical address from our main database. That is where people go door-to-door and drop off the survey to those that receive mail in a P O box. A lot of people have been responding, saying they have not received theirs, and so what we need to do is to try and get the message out to folks that receive mail in a P O box, that they need to use their physical address as their response if they want to go online and respond, and to reach out and let us know if they still have not seen a survey and they're wanting to fill it out. That, that operation has been completed as far as going door-to-door and people were in their proper P P E as they were, you know, going door-to-door, but because of COVID, that, that operation was definitely impacted the most. The non-response follow-up, what we call NARFU, is going to be starting on August eleventh in your area, and again, people will be going door-to-door for those, the, the final chance for those who have not responded by phone, by mail, or by written survey. This will be their opportunity, their last opportunity to respond. But utilizing the school system, I think, will be really helpful as we go into the second school year, encouraging the principals, superintendent to, you know, work with the students, either using our Statistics in Schools program or whatever choice they would like if it's a competition. For instance, in Big Spring and Andrews, we're going to be doing a competition between the schools on who can get more of a response rate. So, you know, ideas like that are things I'm throwing out there in, in hopes that, that we'll be able to execute that. And, yeah, I think that that is pretty much it as far as dates and, and updates go. Do you have any questions for me?
Amber, that, this is David Vella, the city manager. That fifty-one point nine percent participation rate, was that for all of Nolan County?
Uh, yes, yes, it is. That's for the entire county. So we do everything based on county, and then it's broken down into census tracks within the county. And so, when you look at the fifty-one point nine percent, it's all five combined. When you look at the map, and I'll actually send this link over to you in an email, so you can log in and I'll walk you through exactly how you can follow up on this, and you can track it yourself as we move forward. You can hi, you can highlight and click on certain areas within Nolan County and see what areas are responding better than others. And for Sweetwater proper, it looks like the majority of that area is responding quite well at sixty-one point nine percent. But just to give you some comparison numbers and to, to also let you know the impact that COVID has had on the census, in 2010, for the 2010 census, sixty-eight point one percent of the population in this specific census tract responded, self-respondered by about this time in 2010. And so we are behind that number by quite a bit, yet given where the rest of the country is and where the rest of the state of Texas is, that's actually a really good number. It's actually above what the state of Texas is doing. So we, we still would like to see that increase. And, and one of the reasons I wanted to call in as well is to just, you know, get some ideas from you all or get our, our creativity flowing on how we can reach out to the community, whether it's maybe in a water bill. I have some labels that I can send over that we can, you know, encourage people if we just want to continue with social media posts and, and helping people find their reason why they want to fill out the census. When you look at the dollar amount, each person is worth about fifteen hundred dollars per person per year in federal funding for things like WIC, you know, Medicaid, other federal programs, but also for population increases for economic reasons, when businesses want to come to the area, they're going to look at population increases in certain census tracks in, in the county and the, the city as a whole, things like that. So each person may have a different reason for why they want to fill out their census and just reaching out and, and you guys being the trusted voices, knowing what those reasons might be, you know, and continuing to brainstorm because we have an unprecedented window of opportunity that we wouldn't have had in the past, where now we have until the end of October to make this happen. So, so the good news is we have time. The bad news is that we've been impacted by social distancing and not having big events and, and things of that nature.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time, and I'll be in touch with email and by phone.
Okay, we'll move to item seven A, which is discussed, consider and act upon approval of the quarterly investment report for the quarter ending June thirtieth, 2020. Any questions to pay?
Karen Pick, under the adoption of the investment report.
Are you seconding it? Both of you? All in favor?
Carrie make the motion, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried and approved. Now move to item seven B, which is discussed, consider and act upon entering into an agreement with Tommy Morris Agency to act as our broker of record for insurance purposes and to evaluate competitive sealed proposals for self-insured group health benefits to be considered at the council August the eleventh meeting. Any questions for Ms. Nancy?
Nancy, are you on the line?
I am, I'm here.
All right, good deal. Thank you for being here with us.
Absolutely, thank you for having me. And Larry, it's good to see you. I'm surprised to see you on here, so.
Well, I was, I've got surprise me back on the city commission or the city council, too.
Well, I'm sure they're glad to have you. And so, gentlemen, if you approve that our usual arrangement to be your broker of record, then we will post the notice for the next two Sundays that we normally post soliciting bids, and then we will, the deadline for submission, as typical, would be five o'clock on August tenth, because I suppose your next meeting is on August eleventh, and then we would read any bids that we receive at that meeting on August eleventh, if that's what you all intend.
Have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Now move to item seven C, which is discussed, consider and act upon authorizing staff to receive competitive sealed proposals for the health insurance benefits and receive recommendations from broker of record at the September eighth to 2020 meeting.
I move, we offer our staff to receive bids for health insurance benefits for 2021.
Do you have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried and approved. Now move to item seven D, which is discussed, consider and act upon naming of the splash pad located at Newman Park. Do we have any recommendations from city staff?
All right, now we're getting to the important stuff here. This would be a resolution to, to name the splash pad located in Newman Park. Like the mayor said, we do have a list of five finalists, if you will, that the staff worked night and day on these last, this last month. And so, here we go. We have Mustang Island, if y'all can see that on the, on the screen. Mustang, these are in no particular order. These are just randomly thrown in there, but these are the final five that we came up with as the staff. Mustang Island. We've got Sweetwater Soap Zone. We've got Sweetwater Harbor Splash Pad. Sweetwater Splash. And Mustang Harbor Splash Pad. And then they're all there, as you can see, on one slide for your decision. But we did, we did take the liberty of putting this out on social media or Instagram and our, our Twitter accounts and just asked informally anybody who was following us to look at the, to look at the names and give us some suggestions on which one they would like to see. The, the first place one, out of all the twenty-nine whole votes that we got of people participating, thirteen of those went to Mustang Island, and seven of those went to Sweetwater Splash. So those were the top two, Mustang Island and Sweetwater Splash. But of course, it's up to the council and whatever y'all want to, want to name it is, is, is going to be up to y'all. You can either use any of these five or come up with something else. Think Vella Family Splash Pad's still open, if you'd like to go to that.
Was there any consideration about Newman Park Splash Pad?
There was consideration about that. We talked about that at the staff level, but the dog park is named the Newman Park Dog Park. And so we, we kind of wanted to, to, you know, deviate a little bit away from that and try to, try to get the community involved as well. So, excuse me, we, we, we got the list of maybe more than a couple of dozen recommendations from the staff and then whittled it down to these five here at the director level.
Do we want to just start out, each one give one and see how we come out or what we want to do? Carrie, go ahead and pick one.
Um, Mustang Harbor.
Okay. Larry?
I'll go with Mustang Harbor.
Okay, Jared? Or Councilman P, I'm sorry.
Um, I don't care what we name it. I just want y'all to know that my granddaughter thinks this place is the bomb. It literally swore us out this weekend up there. I will, I'll join the consensus of Mustang Harbor Splash Pad.
I'll go with Mustang Harbor Splash.
All right, everybody's in agreeance. Mustang Harbor Splash Pad.
That'll work.
All right. Somebody, please put that in a motion.
I move that we name my granddaughter's new favorite spot, the, the Sweetwater Splash Pad, that we call it Mustang Harbor Splash Pad.
I make Carrie Baker second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll now read the resolution, a resolution of the City of Sweetwater adopting official name of the Sweetwater Splash Pad. Mustang Harbor Splash Pad. All right, we'll now move to item seven E, which is discussed, consider and act upon adopting amendments to codes of ordinances for chapter twenty-three Parks and Recreation. Mr. Jones?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, council. This is just some updates on the, uh, Parks and Recreation ordinance that we feel we kind of needed. Basically, it covers some liability and safety issues. If y'all have had a chance to read all this, does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions on it?
Oh, sure.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I, I do have one question. Where it discusses remote controlled electric aircraft devices, does that include drones?
It does not. Most of your drones are going to be lighter than the, uh, the recommended weight on there.
Okay, all right, thank you. Jared Pick, I move adoption of these amendments to the park ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now read the ordinance into the record. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Sweetwater amending chapter twenty-three Parks and Recreation to Article One, generally of the Sweetwater Code of Ordinance, providing for servability and the effective date. Now move to item seven F, which is discussed, consider and act upon marketing agreement with utility service partners, private label, line warranties of America. Mr. Dana?
I see Emily's on line. Good, very good. I'll be doing, I'll be presenting this, and then Emily Zalfini, who's with Home Serve USA Corp., is also here to answer any questions that mayor and council may have of this request. This is a, a request really for a marketing agreement. It would establish a National League of Cities endorsed service line program with the City of Sweetwater. This is a, a program that would provide for warranties for sewer, private sewer and water mains, private sewer and water lines from the structure to the mains. It's the homeowner's responsibility to maintain those. This program would allow for warranties. I would go through what we call the Utility Service Partners Private Label Incorporated. That is a subsidiary of Home Serve USA Corp. So the marketing agreement is between the city and that entity. So it would offer purchase from homeowners of a service plan for water and sewer laterals and internal plumbing and drainage. So anything on the inside, there's three separate warranties that would be available. It's a purchase, it's a choice of the homeowner. It's not an obligation of the homeowner. And then the purpose is really to grant a license to the company for the right to offer and market the products to the homeowners. So they would do direct mailings to the homeowners. They would have our city logo on there. And one clarification, because we have the Texas star in our logo, they would only use City of Sweetwater in the marketing materials because they have an agreement with the state of Texas, they cannot use the star in their materials that they market. The marketing agreement is a three-year term with one-year renewals. There is potential then for license fee paid to the city. It'd be fifty cents per product. For each month, the product is enforced, and that is paid for on an annual basis. So the, the program is such that, um, marketing materials go out to the homeowners, and it's pretty flexible. Typically, there's an initial mailing, and the, according to the, the agreement, the, the mayor would sign along with their representative that initial letter explaining the program, the purpose of the program, and the benefits of the program. Any mailings beyond that would, could be our just City of Sweetwater and their representative's signature. It's pretty flexible. We could have our signature on there, too, and I think Emily would probably touch on that a little bit more as we get into this, what the options would be. But it is for their ability to market the program, to try and sell the warranties to the homeowners. Based on what would be paid out, you have brochure materials that for water and sewer laterals, it would pay up to eighty-five hundred dollars for a, per incident, per repair incident. So no annual or lifetime limits, deductibles or service fees. So it's a way to have the homeowners upgrade their infrastructure, and it's a payout monthly rather than a payout on an emergency where maybe there's not a lot of savings, and folks can't afford that at that time. Under internal plumbing and drainage, it'd be a three thousand dollar per repair incident, same, you know, no annual or lifetime limits, deductibles or service fees. There's three campaigns per year, and each campaign would have two direct mailings, most likely to the homeowners. And I can tell you that when I lived in Lawton, Oklahoma, we had this program, so I'm familiar with this program. Abilene, City of Abilene has this program as well, and there's a number of communities in Texas that have this program, large and small communities. Being endorsed by the National League of Cities, that's pretty heavy endorsement for this type of program. And again, I really want to reiterate, it's not an obligation on the homeowner, and there's no cost to the City of Sweetwater for this program. It's just a way to try and get some things fixed up that need to be fixed, as it would relate to sewer and water lines and so forth. The repairs are to a certain building code level that we have adopted here with the city. The local contractors are sought first for the work, so we try and keep the, the work in-house. Again, it replaces aging private site infrastructure. And I think one of the benefits that you really may not see is that we do have leaks in our, you know, there's leaks in water lines, and it may have an effect on saving water down the line that we're losing maybe to some aged infrastructure. So there's certainly some benefits to that program, and at this point, just kind of touched on some of the highlights of it. Again, I'm familiar with the program, and we were approached by this company. We didn't go out for RFPs typically. In Texas, my understanding is that the, most communities have not gone out for the request for proposals on this project. It's just been a Texas way of doing business with this program. So, and Emily may touch on that a little bit, too, and maybe give some more information about the program and, and how far reaching this program is nationally and in Texas, and if that's okay. Mayor, if there's any questions from the city council, or if you'd like for Emily Zalfini to speak a bit about the program, it's, it's up to you at this point. Want Emily to say a few words? Okay, Emily, you want to touch on a few things?
Sure, thank you. I think you covered most of the bases. Just to kind of reiterate, though, we've been in this business for about sixteen years now, so this is nothing new for us. We've been working with the N L C since 2010. I do always like to bring up the fact that in 2013 and 2018, we won the Torch Award for Marketplace Ethics, just because it's something we're really proud of, and we always work as hard as we can to try and maintain those high ethical standards. But over our time, we've gained over seven hundred and fifty partners across the U S and Canada. We currently have forty-three in Texas, and in Texas currently, I just pulled up some statistics last night, and we have over ninety-two thousand residents that are currently enrolled across the state. And in the past three years, we've saved right around eighteen and a half million dollars in repairs for homeowners. So that's really huge. It's been really beneficial across the state. And part of the reason for the lack of RFP in the area especially is just that there aren't very many companies that do something like this, and those that do don't really have that national recognition or the experience that we do. But I do just want to reiterate, this program is completely optional. It's really just providing an option for a homeowner if they have an issue, and then also helping to educate them on the fact that they're responsible for those lines, because we know that a lot of the time homeowners will reach out to the city first and tend to get very upset when they find out it's their responsibility, and they have to pay for everything out of pocket. We also make a point to only use local area contractors, so we go out of our way to vet those contractors. We make sure they have the proper insurance, they're licensed, bonded, no open complaints with the B B B. We also go as far as doing background checks and drug screenings, so we try to do everything we can to hopefully make sure it's a contractor that homeowners feel comfortable working with. But we thought it's very important to keep that revenue within your local community, as well as just the business in general within the local community, and then we expect them to know what the standards and codes are in the area as well, and if there's anything unique that they might run into. But aside from that, he pretty much covered everything for me. Did anyone have any questions?
Emily, can you kind of tell us what the percentage of participants you get within a, your average city?
Yeah, so it does vary a good bit. So our standard agreement is generally a three- So our standard agreement is generally a three-year marketing agreement. Over those three years in Texas specifically, we usually have somewhere between 18 and 20% enrollment. So that would mean one homeowner, or I'm sorry, a homeowner enrolls into at least one option over those three years.
Question for staff, do we have any projections on revenue, potential revenue to the city? Realistic expectations?
I, I can't really give a projection on that. I think based on the numbers that Emily just provided, we probably could, given that. But you know, it's probably not going to be a real revenue generator. But you know, I would hope that we'd have a lot of participation. So more participation, more additional revenue. But again, I think that revenue aside, great question. I, I think the fact that it gives peace of mind to the homeowner if they're just, they're really paying upfront for something that may happen to them. I think we've all had situations like that, that unfortunately come up. And then we got to take it out of our savings and we're reduced amount there. So I wish I had, wish I had a good answer for you, Councilman Peak. I just don't on this particular question.
We, we have about maybe 3,500 residential water accounts. So let's just say 20% of that is what?
700.
350, so 700 and then 50 cents a month. 700 households participating, 50 cents a month, $350 a month times 12 months. And there you go, there's your annual, something like that.
At 20% roughly?
At 20% roughly. So it's not a large amount, but it's, it's, it's something will, will, that would benefit the city coffers and a little bit helps, especially in this economic environment.
And, and I would say to that, that any marketing materials that go out, any proposals are reviewed by staff. So there's a little time involved with the staff to, to work with the company on what is mailed out and so forth. So it does cover a little bit of that. That's really not a real significant cost, but there is that associated with it.
When I was, during my time in Abilene, if I may, I was, I ran point on this project, kind of like Dana's running point on this project for us here in Sweetwater and with the same company, under the same terms. And we never, we never had a problem with them. It was high participation in Abilene and I hope there continues to be. Saved a lot of people a lot of money when, when the leak or whatever occurs on their side of the meter. And they have the warranty coverage. They, they just call and I really never got any complaints about, well, you know, they're denying coverage because of this reason or that reason. If I remember correctly, the, the, the company did a good job in servicing the customers that had purchased the warranty and, and had a good working relationship with me at the time and city as well. So I have, I have no bad history with this company. In fact, it was, it was all very, very positive.
Emily, I've got a question about the, the premiums on, let's just say the, the coverage on the, the lines from the meter to the house. Is, is that a set fee per household or is it based on the length of the lines? Or, or how do you, how do you go about determining that?
It's actually set. We have a standard pricing for every city under 100,000 households across the state of Texas. So for instance, the water line protection from the meter to the home would be $5.75 per month.
Do you do your own billing or is this on the city's water bill?
We do our own billing. That's always a big question that comes up, yeah. Really, the main thing that we ask of from the city is just for the use of the city name on our marketing material. It's part of what helps us to get people to open the letter and actually read it. But we do, as mentioned, we do send over all that marketing material before each campaign for your review and approval. So you have a say in the messaging, you can make edits as you see fit. And then a big thing too, is if for any reason, whether, you know, an election's coming up or COVID goes crazy again, hopefully not. But just depending on what the situation is, we do allow you to ask us just to pause our mailings at any point as well. So you really have the control as to if and when we mail.
Dana, you mentioned there's not many companies that do this. We're not, we're, we're not giving them an exclusive right to do this if, if, if some other company wanted to also do it. Is that correct?
Well, based on the agreement, we would be giving them the exclusive agreement, Councilman May. So you know, there's other means for homeowners to have these lines repaired. For instance, a home warranty, there's a number of, if you're, if you bought a home, you got a home warranty. That's another way that homeowners can have these things funded if they have a problem. But for this particular program specifically like this, it would give them license and it would be exclusive license for them to manage this program. And I think that's probably the case. And Emily, you might want to touch on it. How, I think it's been this way in Texas, at least for the cities that you're working with.
Yeah, so just to kind of elaborate on that, most of the time, of course, home warranties are always available. We don't stop anyone from getting another warranty or using another company if they find one. Home warranties oftentimes though, do not cover the exterior lines. They usually only cover interior plumbing and drainage. So that's one factor there. But also even though this agreement is technically exclusive, it's basically just saying that the city can't lend out its name and receive royalty from another company that's a direct competitor. However, there is a clause that we can add in there, basically just stating that if the city decides to work with a competitor on this, then our contract would just cancel automatically. And there's no penalty or anything like that for that. I can always have that added in for you.
Emily, you mentioned something about using local plumbers and I heard the word bonded. I don't think any of our local plumbers are bonded. Is that a requirement that a plumber be bonded?
So it would not be if it's not a requirement for the city. But as long as it basically meets all the standards of the city and the local government and area. That's, that's basically what we look for. Being insured is the biggest thing.
So Emily, from the standpoint of the homeowner, if, if there's a leak in a sewer line, do they call the plumber, pay the plumber and then y'all reimburse them? Or do they have to call y'all and y'all handle the repairs?
Another great question. So this is not a reimbursement program. Ideally, they would give us a call first. We would find them a contractor, we send the contractor out and they, and then we pay the contractors directly when the job is complete. However, there have been some cases and it's not what we prefer, but there have been some cases where people have found their own contractors, you know, paid for all the work and then reached out to us. And in most cases, we will reimburse them. We try to get them, of course, to call us first so that we have a little more control over the contractors that are used and, and can kind of negotiate some of the pricing with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I make a motion, we accept the recommendation of staff.
Do we have a second?
Jared, pick, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried and approved. Okay, we'll now move to item 7G, which is discussed, consider and act upon awarding highest bid for the Oak Creek Lake lots number 468 and 509.
Please.
We received four bids for lot 468, the highest being from John Dagenhart for 17,500. For lot 509, four bids were received and the highest was Michael Todd Smith for 3,361.
Any questions on those?
Are there any structures on these lots?
Yes, sir, on lot 509.
I believe we accept the highest bids.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, now move to item 7H, which is discussed, consider and act upon establishing a date for a workshop to review, request for proposals, selection of vendor to manage and operate solid waste management services in the City of Sweetwater. Mr. Dana?
Mayor Council, this is a request to establish a workshop to review RFPs that we are submitted for solid waste management services. This is, is directed by City Council as we've been going through this process of looking at how we manage solid waste services, which includes refuse collection for residential, refuse, collection for commercial and a roll-off program. We had mailed off RFPs to nine potential proposers earlier this year. Allowed time for those proposals to come in. They had to be in by June 26th. We, we have two proposals basically. And Public Services has submitted a proposal and also is directed by the, the council, the City of Sweetwater has submitted a proposal as well, which is really due diligence and taking a look at that program at a very comprehensive level. So we can compare. So the 26th to July 14th is a pretty short timeline. When the RP was put together, I guess that wasn't anticipated as it should have been. So it's very difficult to make a decision or recommendation in that timeline. This being a monumental decision, quite honestly, for the City of Sweetwater. The, the team that had reviewed the information that had come in really suggested then that we adequately advise the City Council, provide all the information, answer questions that you may have so you can make a good decision moving forward on this program. Because I think we all understand this is going to have an impact on the City of Sweetwater in many ways. And so making the right decision moving forward is important. Therefore, if we, we would like to try and establish a workshop on Wednesday, July 29th. And the intent of that workshop again is to review the information, answer questions, advise council accordingly. And then on August 11th, we would ask the council to consider vendor moving forward, how we want to manage and operate our solid waste management services program. So it's a month out from what the RFP basically said. And I'll be honest, you know, the RFP said a decision would be made on July 14th, which is today. And I just didn't feel comfortable myself that a decision could be made where the information presented and the questions asked, just, it wouldn't be enough. And I think it's, it just needs to be addressed in a workshop session specific to this issue and then move forward from there. I think in all respects, I think that's the appropriate way to manage this process. So request the workshop and then put this on the agenda for August 11th for consideration moving forward of a provider.
Okay, you said a workshop on Wednesday, July the 29th?
Yeah, that's.
What time?
I guess probably 9:00 AM, more like the times that you have your regular meeting.
Okay.
Approximately, how long would it take?
We would present both of the proposals. I think we'd get into the reasoning behind why we're doing what we're doing. I think, you know, I, maybe an hour, two hours probably, I'm thinking. Right around that time, pure give or take, just a little bit, I would think.
We just want to make sure that that date works with everybody's schedule. If there's another date that works at a better time, then, then we can, we can set it on, on whichever date you prefer.
Okay. Hearing no objections, I move we schedule a workshop for the date and time mentioned.
Second, the most.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried and approved. We'll have a meeting Wednesday, July the 29th at 9:00 AM. Okay, we'll now move to item 7I, which is discussed, consider and act upon authorizing city manager to enter into a lease and operation agreement for the opening of the Lake Sweetwater bait shop.
Mayor and Council, we received a proposal. It was from Ms. Lori Ortega. If you're not familiar with her, she's a Sweetwater resident. She submitted a really, really good proposal that staff thinks is qualified. She would like to open the bait store and she's wanted to do it in phases, which we think under the situation is probably a pretty smart thing to do by summer 2021.
Russell, she wanted to do a what?
I'm sorry.
She wanted to open it up in phases, Larry.
Okay, phases, thank you. I didn't understand that.
Yeah, yeah, the first phase would be to get the convenience store items in the store opened up. And by summer of 2021, she wants to have more of a diner inside the bait store. So more of a restaurant setting along with the convenience store. Like I say, I think it's a really good, good plan that she's got to develop throughout, you know, the phases that she's wanting to do with landscaping to the, the little RV area that she has right there next to the bait store. Just wanted consideration of council to enter into this agreement. If you have any other questions?
Russell, the summary sheet talks about a rent and the city will offer improvement abatements. Would you expound upon that?
Yes, sir. We have, we've offered a rental abatement with the, the proposal that she sent in in the license agreement. And what that is, is anything that she improves with the building, let's just give an example. The kitchen area needs a new vent hood system. What we would do is she would pay for that vent hood system and we would abate the rent up to two years for the cost of that system. So you know, normally you're looking at 10, $12,000 probably for a good vent system with fire suppression. And so what we would do is we would take that off of her monthly rent. The reason being is because normally that is going to be a fixture of the building. And so if anything ever happened, it would stay with the building. It's kind of the reasoning for that.
Well, I'm pleased that anybody would want to take the risk to open, open that store. I guess I wouldn't maybe not be opposed if we subsidized her a small amount every month until she got it going.
Do we have a motion to lease it to her?
I move we approve the lease as written.
Second. Carry on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved.
Thank you.
City managers report.
Thank you. Thank you, Russ.
Yes, sir, Mayor Council, just have one item for the city manager's report this month. It's updated numbers on the COVID-19 epidemic that continues to plague our, our nation, our state and in our city, in fact. Just wanted to go over a couple of.
Just wanted to go over a couple of 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 numbers with y'all. You'll see that I pulled, I pulled these statistics from the CDC's website. I checked them again this morning, and they're, they're still haven't been updated as of yesterday. So these are as of yesterday. Total cases in Nolan County are 67, as opposed to some of our neighboring counties or areas of counties in the region, Taylor being at 708, and Brown County being at 171. I did want to point, point out that the cases per capita, per 100,000 population, we're right there with Abilene and Brownwood. We're 455 per 100,000. Taylor is at 500, and is that 13 per 100,000? And Brown County is at 452 per 100,000 population. So when you take a look at the total numbers, we're, we're way behind Taylor and and Brown. But when you, when you extrapolate those out and get them on a, on an apples-to-apples comparison in terms of per capita, we're right there with them. And so that just goes to show you that in the last month or so, we we had for the longest time about two cases here in Nolan County. And then it just, it just jumped considerably to where we are today at 67 cases. The total deaths is what everybody should be looking at. I know the media is reporting total cases, and and that's just one kind of parameter that should be reported, in in my opinion. The cases per capita and the total deaths are what you look for when you look for COVID information. And we've been very blessed by our Lord that in Nolan County, we have not had a fatality due to COVID up to this date, and we hope and pray that continues. In Taylor County, they've had seven fatalities, and in Brown County, they've had 13. So those are the latest numbers as of this morning from the CDC. I just wanted to go ahead and pass those along to y'all, just to demonstrate that the per capita, we're right there with with some of the other larger counties in our area and our region. But with total deaths, like I said, we've, we're at zero, and and we hope and pray we stay that way. And Mayor and Council, that's all I had on my report this morning.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody want to stay?
I'm staying here.